...meeting of the Tiverton Town Council with a pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Councilman Lambert.
Present.
Councilor Rodrick.
Present.
Councilor Luda.
Present.
Councilor Durfee.
Present.
Councilor Bowlin.
Yeah.
Council Leonard.
Present.
Council Cox.
Yeah.
All of you.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of following. Approval of minutes of May 11, 2009, regular council meeting. Approval of executive session minutes of May 11, 2009. Approval of executive session minutes from April 27th, regular council meeting. Councilor Bowlin abstained, absent. Approval of special meeting executive session on April 24, 2009. Councilor Bowlin abstained, absent. Received of minutes from the bond boards and commissions, recreation commission, historical cemetery, cemetery commission, waste water management planning board, and harbor commission. Correspondence received at Ryle, received in town Borough, regarding opposing house bill, H-971, and act relating to boxing recreation areas. Received in town Charleston regarding support of U.S. Supreme Court opinion in Kachery versus Salazar, ensuring no land throughout Maranin, beginning by statement of municipal ordinances. Received from Carolina State donor regarding public financing of all general elections in Maranin. Approval of tax assessment amendments. Approval to scheduled public hearing on June 22nd council meeting for noise variance on outdoor music at St. Teresa's annual feast to be held on July 31st and August 1st. That's tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor. Financial business, county administrator, request approval of transfer.
Request council approval of transfer $11,351.22 from account 554611, DPW Gas and Oil, account 105359, litigation.
Make a motion that we approve the transfer.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor. Town administrator requests approval of transfer.
Request council approval of transfer $19,654.90 from account 331101 firefighter salaries to account 331102 firefighter overtime.
Make a motion that we approve the request.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor. Unanimous.
Request council approval to transfer funds from account 554611, DPW Gas and Diesel for $5,398.52 to, and, I'm sorry, and from account 553611 landfill gas and diesel, a total of $7,701.48 to account 553339 Engineering Services.
I've got a... I'll make the motion to request the approval of transfer.
I had a question on this.
Second.
The motion is seconded. Discussion, God bless.
The last sentence says also included in this request is $3,000 for the DEM landfill license renewal. Now, the transfers totaled $13,100, and they are for engineering testing permits. Am I to believe that... How is the $3,000 accounted for?
Mr. Bucchi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You correct around $13,000 that we have the shot for. This is for power engineering. $3,000 of it is for renewal of the landfill license if that comes about this fiscal year. The balance is to carry us through June 30th for testing, well testing and analysis of the landfill that's required by DEM. And there's some alternate testing that has to be done because the required testing met a certain threshold, so required us to go back testing again. And then there's funding that was never set aside for using PAR to analyze and work with DEM to process the contractors donated cover. So every time there's donated cover, it has to be sent to DEM, but first we send it to PAR for their analysis and blessing. They forward it to DEM, so there's this process back and forth. So that was never funded either.
Okay. My question is that if this is going to PAR Engineering, to the tune of $13,100, covering all the testing that was done, then how do you account for the three? Is the $3,000 going to be in addition? Or is it going to pass through? Is PAR expending the license fee and we are reimbursing PAR?
Either choice. We haven't crossed that bridge yet. I'm just trying to set aside the $3,000. It can be, you know, it can be given to PAR if PAR puts up the $3,000 to send the license in. I expect that would be the way it would go for accounting purposes, but...
Now, Steve, I'm not certain you're understanding me. Your total transfer is $13,100.
Right.
That is going to PAR Engineering to cover all the testing, et cetera. Okay?
Right.
So if that's going to PAR, it can't be going to DEM?
Well, $3,000 out of the 13 is going to be needed for the DEM license renewal. And PAR is handling our license renewal, so it's basically a reimbursement for his cost for the license application.
And when does that do?
The license, our license expired last December 30th, so we are currently operating on that past license until we get this new one renewed. And we do not have that yet.
Right. Might not it have been clearer to say that of the $13,000, we are going to be reimbursing PAR for the license?
Yeah, that would have been a clearer way. I thought I noted it there, but maybe it's...
It's noted, but when you look at the transfers and the add up, the transfer is being transferred to engineering testing permits.
Right.
So it becomes a total of 13,100, and when you mention the three, I do know you say that it's for current and anticipated.
Right.
So I think that covers the fact that the $13,000 is not outstanding. It's what, it's also the anticipated amount.
Anticipated to carry us through June 30th, yes. That's correct. And the license fee.
Can we have a motion to second any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Unanimous.
Town clerk?
I'm requesting a release of carry forward funds for $9,925. That's in the recodified town code. I have already expended this year's appropriation, and we now have everything right through May with the exception of maybe three or four stop signs that are coming up to go down. This should complete everything that we have to be codified. I'd like it released because there is additional work to do on the code, so I'd like the full amount to be released. I haven't got the actual bill even though IMICO has completed about 80% of the work on this supplement subject.
I'll make a motion that the release as requested by the town clerk in the amount of $9,925 be approved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor. Motion carries unanimously.
Town administrator.
Request the council release carry forwards that are in the DPW accounts, and with the release, transfer the funds to account 331102 Fire Department Overtime. The total of that is $49,391.14. And there was also one zoning board account for $805. Oh, the $805. Yeah, that's right. I've got to revise that and remove the $805. So it would be all other than the $805.
So it'll be the $48,585.65?
That's the math, yeah.
Where is this going to put us in terms of the Fire Department Overtime?
We're still going to have a slight shortage. We're hoping that as time goes on, we may be able to work out of it, but we're not sure. It all depends on vacation requests.
So we're basically transferring tonight almost $60,000 or $60,000 plus into the overtime because we already transferred $19,654.90.
Right. The total is about $68,000.
Are those going to deplete those accounts in DPW?
The carry forwards, correct.
If the financial town meeting, the director of public works, is going to get up and make a motion to increase funding for sand, salt, and so forth, how do you feel about the transfer? Is it...
Well, I believe these are from '07, '08. Am I right there? These carry forwards are from the '07, '08 budget.
Correct.
I could use it all and spend 10 times as much, so I mean, but this isn't from this year's budget. This is from...
But you're also anticipating shortfall, you know, for next year.
We are. You can see what's coming up every meeting. We're juggling from this draw to pay for this draw, and when the bills come in, we've got to grab it. It's juggle time. I mean, and I know Jim's doing it as well as DPW and every one of us. We'll just have to make it work.
It's forecasted that this will leave us approximately $15,000 short.
Jim, is there any future that this overtime is going to slow down at all?
It depends on contract negotiations. Contract negotiations are very important relative to this account.
These monies are due under this contract, so I'll make a motion with anguish that the transfers be made.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Sitting as a warrant of license commissioners, we now open a public hearing on Little Bear Lounge, 983 Main Road, request for a liquor license. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Three and a half years ago, I stood before you to get a transfer of my liquor license. I was 72 years old and I was going to retire, but here I am back again to open up business. I'd like to read a just short statement, if I may, please. "I first opened up Little Bear Lounge on September of 1982. I ran the business for 25 years. Having a license, I know, is a privilege, not a matter of right. I have given back to Tiverton whenever I could. I have given free buffets and banquets for the little egg, pop Warner, Cub Scouts, cheerleaders, and so forth. We did fundraisers for many organizations in Tiverton. Little Bear Lounge sent an eight-year-old boy with brain tumor to Disney World with his family, and we paid all the bill. I plan to have a sports lounge at Little Bear Lounge. We have taken the old Little Bear that had seating over 500 people, and we want to just serve 100. We will have no bands and no DJs, and we'll not have a dance floor. The entertainment license is for the small dining room that seats 35 people."
Working on your liquor license. We've got to look...
Can I just read the whole thing?
Yeah, I'm sure you can, but you take this as too simple.
Yes, I understand that. I just wanted to give... They may, if we're going to have parties, want entertainment, so that is what we're going to have. And also, the entertainment will be for St. Patrick's Day and Christmas. I will be serving breakfast seven days a week from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We plan, if possible, to have dinners Friday and Saturday night. I believe the records will show in my 25 years that I've had no problems with the Fire Department Police Department. Thank you."
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on the matter of liquor license for Little Bear Lounge?
Alakody, Wapnugling.
I've known Mr. Little for well over 40 years. I don't think you've found a better man. He's always ran an upstanding business, and he's got a heart as big as gold.
Thank you.
As much as I don't like to, I'm Emmett McTeague from Watermark Drive, which is down behind Little Bear. As much as I don't like to, because I'm glad it's going to reopen, and I liked going there, but I have to say the noise level, at least with the previous owner, and I was not here when you owned it before, but with the previous owner, they'd open the doors. It was not so much the owner that was at fault, but the noise level. And frequently at 2:00 in the morning, people'd be out on the deck drinking, and they'd be playing, I don't know what they were playing in there, but it was, it would be very loud. And that was a real problem, especially when we had guests. Anyone, if they wanted to open their windows, you know, you couldn't get any sleep. So it's a very poor environment for at least anything that's going to be at all loud. And like I say, my concern is the patrons moving out onto the deck, making a lot of noise, opening the doors to cool it off, opening the windows. So unless there's a real strict time condition, it becomes very hard for us to feel that it's a good idea at all.
Can I answer that one?
Sure.
Where we have Little Bear now is there will be no decks. We eliminate the decks. Little Bear now will be fully air-conditioned. The windows will be closed, so I can't see any problem. It's just going to be a sports lounge, no serving, anything else, beverage or food outside, no decks, so that's it.
I just said, is there a way to stop, is there a way to stop people from moving out into the parking lot, into the yard, and assembling?
Well, I believe that's against the law, and we find them doing that, that they'll, we'll make sure we'll get rid of them. Because I want to get along with my neighbors, and so you're not going to have any problems with us, believe me.
As always, after hours, we usually have a cruiser around at all bars, checking that specific bar at the closing hour, and so I don't anticipate people leaving the parking lot.
Thank you.
Jay Hodder, I'm also from Watermark Drive, just down the hill, and I have a question. I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Mr. Little.
Mr. Little. And I guess for the council, is it possible to have an entertainment license without the right to do music? Or if the entertainment license is granted, does that also come, automatically come with the ability to do music, to, you know, have bands and DJs and things like that? So I'm just wondering if, and I don't doubt Mr. Little's word, but if the license, if the entertainment license is granted, and I may have skipped ahead on the agenda here, and so I apologize, could he at some date, later date, have the legal right to provide music at the Little Bear?
I think it is going to be a matter of how the license is awarded and what the license allows, and I think we can't have restrictions on entertainment.
And I think that's the concern of the abutters. I'd love to have another nice restaurant choice in the neighborhood that I could literally walk to. I mean, that would, you know, I think a lot of people there would love to see an upgrade, an improvement in the facility, can sure use it, and, you know, so if absent the music and the noise concern that Emmett, you know, voiced, I think that would go a long way to assuaging the concerns of the neighbors.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm also part of the Villages of Mount Hope Bay. My question is, if they allow music, do we have any guarantee how loud they can play it, or, you know, I'm just wondering, because the noise does travel into our area.
There is a noise ordinance, and there are limits of what the decimal levels are leaving the property.
In that level, what does that tell me as an abutter?
Well, as an abutter, you look at our noise ordinance, and for every type of noise, there's a level that can be admitted once it passes. In other words, a reading would be taken at the person's property line, and it can't exceed, and that's how it would be determined.
You know, the town has, much to a lot of people's consternation, a very strict noise ordinance. And I would only suggest that you probably have been too patient listening to the prior owner and losing sleep, because we do have complaints, and as a council, we have taken action with regard to that. So I just wanted to say...
How do we make that complaint, or where, just to the council?
I think the first, it's first, the complaint is registered with the police department. Police department has the equivalent, I believe, to monitor the situation, to see if it is the exceedance of the ordinance, and then we take the appropriate action to cite those people, violation of that ordinance, and then with the complaints, then it comes before the council.
Another question that I have, again, Arlene Landersberg. I live on Waters Edge. The owner has no control of this, but this is another factor. It's unfortunate, that restaurant was there before they built the Villages of Mount Hope Bay, which is residential. And one of the things that you have in a restaurant like that is motorcycles coming and going, and the jazzing up of the noise. I mean, this has nothing to do with the license for entertainment, but it's another factor of living right next to this facility. And I suppose that's just a fact of doing business.
Well, no, I understand that, but my point is, you know, it's when you bought real estate, somebody once told me, you come to the neighborhood at different times and different things and see what it's like. There was a restaurant there, and there was patrons there, and if there was motorcycle noise, it was there. I mean, this is something, I don't think anybody who owns an establishment can say what type of vehicles we're going to pull up and do business with them. Unfortunately, once again, those are things that if they are violating, you know, a noise ordinance, and some of those motorcycles do, there's, you know, a procedure. But I think it's unfortunate, we can't restrict what type of vehicle traffic, because it's a business.
Okay. When, Mr. Little, how long has it been since you owned the property?
I bought the property in 1982.
Right, and you sold it in 2000?
Three, three and a half years ago.
Three and a half years ago. I will say, I mean, I've heard a lot of noise ordinance today.
Chief's over.
But I don't think I've ever sat on the council and had, when you were running the establishment...
Complaint.
Any complaints. And that, that does have a bearing on new ownership. And Mr. Little has been a member of a council in Portsmouth and knows what it's like to have complaints with regard to noise, and I suspect it's pretty sympathetic to neighbors who have to put up with something, so...
Ms. Durfee, and I'd like to say that I run, I have always run the Little Bear as if I were to live next door. I mean, I definitely wouldn't put up with anybody. I don't want to inconvenience anyone. And if there's, you just come down and talk to me, but I'm sure you're not going to have any problems with this.
Ask one more question.
Sure, there's a couple on the microphone.
The, I just wondered, is it transferable? Not that he's ever going to want to leave, but...
All licenses, the, a transfer of the license would put that individual through the same process of having a public hearing, allowing people to discuss, you know, what his reputation, if he's had other businesses, if he's had any problems or so forth, because liquor licenses do require public hearings in order to transfer.
Mr. Little?
Yes?
What are your plans for the hours of operation?
We're going to be open up at 6:00 in the morning for breakfast, and the lounge will be closing at 1:00.
Just to interject one more thing. Is it possible to, you know, ask Mr. Little if he would entertain the idea of having his entertainment license, you know, limited to...
We can talk, we can talk to that issue when we discuss the entertainment license. Currently, we have an issue with the liquor license.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
First of all, anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing on the liquor license. Yes, Mr. Chairman?
I want to make a motion the license be granted, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
And I second that.
I do.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to grant the BV liquor license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. It's unanimous. Then we'll move on to item two, which is entertainment license.
Mr. Little?
If I may ask you a question, and I know you spoke briefly, but as far as entertainment, you're saying that if there was, say, a party in the dining room or something like that, a small wedding or christening, maybe a DJ or something of that sort, or a small combo, I would assume?
That's exactly, maybe one or two piece. So something, you know, music that go along. And then like on St. Patrick's Day, we'd like to have Irish singer there or something. It's, we hope to have more of a family atmosphere there. I'm too old to chase kids and all that, so that's why we downsized the lot.
Thank you. This is now a public hearing on the entertainment license. So if anyone from the public wishing to be heard on the entertainment license for the business in Little Bear Lounge at 983 Main Road.
Could I make a suggestion that the testimony that we've heard with regard to the entertainment license, so it won't have to be...
Will be, will be considered.
...entered as part of the hearing?
The hearing. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard?
Do I need to rephrase my question that I...
Yeah, you can ask your last question if you wish, sure. Because I was not, no, I understand.
I'm beating a dead horse here. But, and, you know, I think the occasional, you know, combos, you know, one, two piece and so forth, I'm just not sure how you get that into a license and how that's articulated and how those restrictions, I'm sure it can be done. I mean, lawyers are very good with words, but I'm not sure how a motion would be phrased tonight and how all that would actually come about to provide some, you know, some comfort, and not so much with Mr. Little, but with a successor, and so I guess that's my concern.
I think I would be more in favor of granting the individual a liquor license if there's problems. Complaints are when we would take and restrict someone's license if they were abusing the privilege. I think right now, he intends in having acoustical music, not amplified and so forth, as he's telling us. I don't want to restrict someone to something that tight, finite, unless there's a problem, and we can restrict licenses if problems and complaints exist. I think we give him the benefit of the doubt only because of the amount of time he's run that establishment in the past, and the council's not having any complaints or problems with his operation. I think, you know, we probably are a little more comfortable, you know, having sat in this council for some 15 years. We've been in for, because he's almost as long as he's had a business here. So, I mean, I know I'm comfortable with that. I know your concerns, and if we have problems, I'm more than willing to address your concerns because we know when nuisance it can be... it can be if someone's violating, you know, the provisions of what he says, but at this point, I don't see a reason to, to restrict that, because we have no complaints.
Although he did, Mr. Little, just, I just had a couple of questions. You said you did not plan to have any DJs.
Yes, I'm not, no.
So if there was a motion restricting from any DJs?
Well, actually, actually, what he's talking about, if, on the restaurant part, if they have a function or wedding, or that there will be a DJ, they are a small band, and also St. Patrick's Day, and whatever other holidays they make, that they may want a little music.
So it'll be more special event related, rather than a weekly?
Yeah, they will, they will not be DJs weekly, believe me.
Okay.
Just at special parties and things like that. If, if they want a DJ, if they just want a two piece or a one piece, then that's what we'll do, but there's not going to be bands and loud music and all that, believe me.
Mr. Little alluded to the fact that the place is going to be air-conditioned. I think we should be more concerned with keeping the doors closed, seeing this is going to be air-conditioned, noise won't be traveling outside the building.
I think we're looking at a much scaled down version of what was in the past, what it was in the past, so I think we give the individual the benefit of the doubt in this day.
I think there are some things that we can take precautions.
No, no, I have no problem with taking precautions.
Suggestion of having the doors closed, if there's going to be air conditioning.
I'm sure he's going to want to do that.
Yeah, but I, putting it in the license, I think would be appropriate.
Mr. President, if I remember right, there's been times when we've granted entertainment license with the provision that there not be any amplification, that it was just acoustic streams, et cetera. So that would not be uncommon also.
Mr. President, there's only two things wrong with Mr. Little, Huck Little, we've known him for a long time. One is he's a Republican, and the second is, his hundred proof Scotch is really only fifty proof. Get a double shot to get it.
I didn't think you noticed.
Now I'm the horns of a dilemma.
Okay, is there anybody else wishing to be heard on the matter?
Well, just to acknowledge that it would be very helpful to us if there, if you could put those last restrictions over.
Well, I'm about to make a motion that will include them, so.
I would vote against a kind of.
At this, at this time, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this up to the council.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that the license be granted, but that the doors for the establishment remain closed, and two, that there be no amplification.
DJ can't operate without.
Yeah, I know.
That's, that's the thing, a DJ can't work without an amplifier.
Well.
It's a special.
I'll second the motion. We say, discussion.
Okay, there's a, there's a motion and a second, that to grant an entertainment license with two provisions, one is the doors be closed, and the second is no amplification. Any further discussion?
Well, I'll just bring up that if he has to have a DJ for a wedding or something like that, they can't do it without amplifiers. I mean, unless he's got an old Victrola stashed away somewhere.
Then you vote, then you vote against, then you vote against the motion, and we entertain a different motion.
We have an exception to your motion, Ms. Turfey, except in the cases of special events. I would think a typical wedding, you would have a DJ there.
Well, the point, the point is, I think that, I think that I'm in favor of issuing a license. If there's a problem, you could restrict the license further to no amplification. If this is only going to happen on occasion, it's going to be mostly, you know, during, you know, earlier hours and so forth, and doesn't become an inconvenience to neighbors, then I don't want to restrict it. If, if it gets out of hand and there's complaints, I think then you can restrict the license because of complaints. Mr. Huck is the first one to stand here and say to us, he understands that a license is a privilege and not something that's automatic, and he understands the responsibilities of that license, and I would like to extend to him the courtesy of allowing him to show us that he's going to do exactly what he said. You know, he's one person that I know I have faith in, it's not like some guy coming here and trying to make a, you know, a killing on something, and trying to tell you anything in order to open his doors. I don't think that's what we have before us, so.
Well, if we don't have a motion, I'd like to make.
We have, we have a motion and a second, okay.
Grant the entertainment license without any conditions.
Right now, we have a motion that we have to vote on with his, with the conditions.
I'd like to say, while we are not personal, close friends at all, I've known Huck Little for as long as he's been in business there, and I think to restrict him in any way is, is improper, quite frankly. I think he'll do a good job, and if he, if he doesn't, if something goes wrong, the council can always address it then. What we're doing, I hate to use this kind of language, but I think we're viewing an imaginary parade of hornbills. What you witnessed under the former owner, I don't think will happen under Mr. Little if he runs his business the same way he did for the twenty-five years preceding the last three or four. So I, I would be voting against any restrictions other than those that are imposed currently by law, such as noise levels and such things as that.
We have a motion and a second, to approve a liquor license with the two restrictions, the doors closed and no amplification, that have been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Oh, wait a minute.
Opposed. The motion fails five to two. Now your motion would be in order.
Well, I'm making a motion that we grant the entertainment license, period, subject to no conditions at all, other than the legal requirements that are already in effect.
I second that motion.
Motion and a second, discussion.
I'm sure Mr. Little is aware of the noise ordinance in the town as well, which is a very strict ordinance, so we can, compliance with that ordinance has to be made as well, that's just a given, so.
Okay, no further discussion, we're voting on motion to grant the entertainment license with no restrictions, other than the noise ordinances and so forth, meet all legal requirements. All those in favor? Opposed. The motion carries five to two. One more is the, sitting as a Board of License Commissioners for a non-advertised hearing, it's on the request for a virtual license for the above-mentioned, imagined property at 983 Main Road.
I would make the motion that that virtual license be granted.
Subject to meeting all legal requirements.
It's a given.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? Do you have any idea when you might open again, Huck?
There's a lot of work to do.
Well, we're hoping the eighth of June, but I just want to say, I want to thank the council, and I will, will do you proud, because I'm sure we're going to run a good staff since then. Thank you. And the abutters, just stop down anytime, if you want to come down and talk to me. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appointments and resignations, Town Administrator requests council approval for tax collector appointment.
I requested the council approve the appointment of the tax collector that was recommended
I'll make a motion that you approve the town administrator's recommendation and appoint Tony Lynn, I mean, is Tony Lynn McGowan as the tax collector.
And I'll second the motion, but also point out, again, this was a situation where we've had two excellent candidates, and two people I think we'd like working here at Town Hall, but I will go with the town administrator's recommendation.
Give me a motion and a second to.
Would it be appropriate if I made another motion to nominate the second person?
Yeah, I, you can, yeah, you have every right to, it's a nomination, or it's a.
Do we have to dispose of the motion?
I think you could ask for nominations, and the town administrator has made his.
He's made his, he's made his recommendation, and.
I would like to take this time now to also nominate Laura Eppke.
And I will second that.
Who was, a person who was put forward by the personnel committee and who was interviewed at the same time.
And I will second that, that nomination. It is a motion to appoint Laura Eppke. The first motion is the motion on the recommendation of the town administrator for Ms. Tony Lynn McGowan, so we'll vote on that one first. There's already sort of discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of the appointment of Tony Lynn McGowan. Against, four to three. Tony Lynn McGowan is the new tax collector. New business, Chris Spencer, town planner, requests a public hearing to be set for proposed zoning changes.
Mr. President, members of the council, I think you have before you a brief summary of some of the proposed zoning changes. It's been before the planning board in both a workshop and a regular scheduled meeting. We went through all the proposed changes, they had a couple recommendations for some format and wording changes, so we're going to be doing a final vote on Tuesday, but in general, there was consensus on the whole packet, so the request here is just to schedule a public hearing for the zoning change.
May I ask, is this the total package?
No, no, the total packet would be coming to you by the next meeting, because I didn't want to give you a packet, but still got a few changes until the planning board is giving the final vote on it.
The, the public hearing is going to have to be at such a time, or to allow for the proper.
Three weeks.
Three weeks, but we can't do that until we have, you know, final wording, because it has to be advertised substantially, as it will appear at that public hearing.
You know, if we're going to advertise for a public hearing, we need to know what we're advertising, and a person, once we make that decision, person's entitled to go to the town clerk's office the next day and say, let me take a look at this. So I, I'm going to say, I don't think this is ready for action by the council. Now, these may be great provisions, but we like to know what we're advertising, so if you're going to.
I guess what I was asking, really, was to hold the date, maybe in July, which would, you would have the packet before you'd even be coming to advertise.
Yeah, it is the eighth of, should you be ready with that?
Yeah, you'll have the entire.
But then we can schedule, we, then that would be the appropriate time, because I'm reluctant to start advertising for a public hearing unless it's a document prepared. First of all, we have to publish the document, and then we have to have it available for those wishing to pick it up, you know, once the advertisement goes forward, so I think we really need to have that.
I'll make a motion, we continue this until our next meeting, and make certain that we do have whatever you're going to suggest we advertise, ready.
We'll have it in your packets next week, so.
We have a motion and a second to continue this matter to our next meeting. Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Town clerk?
I'm asking for the council's approval to enter an agreement to have the personal types and the town solicitor do a revision on the code. Now that all the code, it'll be right up to date, charter stipulates that every five years, we really should be going through and cleaning up. As far as anyone can tell, we've never done that, and it's, now that we're right up to date, we're getting everything codified, I think it's a good time to proceed to clean up that code, take out the things that contradict one another, and, you know, hunting on Sundays or whatever it is, you know, letting the chicken cross the road.
The blunderbuss.
Blunderbuss, all those things. It would not be the subject of the motion, and he has set the proposal with some guidelines as to how this would be done, and how it's been done in other communities.
Before we, before we do a recodification of the ordinances, I would just think it would be a wise idea to look at some of these, as somebody said, I think we've got some stuff in our ordinances that we keep carrying, recodifying, you know, every five years, ordinances that we don't use, we don't enforce.
That's what this is going to do. It's going to clean the whole thing up, it's going to address them, go through subcommittee, go through the departments that handle them, clean up the wording in them, it's, it's a whole process.
Okay, because sometimes I thought I was taking, well, in the past, some of our codification of these things, you're just taking the things, well, what we've done is, we've left everything there, we've taken everything we've passed, and everything we've added, this is, this is, you're going to analyze.
Order of the ordinance, clean, clean through. So those that are really not appropriate, anything. He will be addressing everything through the subcommittee, and then back to the council before anything.
Some of our ordinances, the state laws that enabled them are.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I want to make sure that if we're going to spend, you know, the money to get something done, that it's going to take a look at some of those, because we, we're looking at some that, the language is so, you know.
The blunderbuss. It is a costly item, but I'm hoping to use, I'll be using the funds from the records and technology account that's grants that are in the clerk's custody to get this through. I think it's time, now that everything has been codified right up to date, it's time for cleanup.
I don't really understand what it is you're trying to do.
He's going to go through the entire.
How is the town solicitor going to be involved in what you're planning to do?
Well, he has to be, because if you read the charter, it tells you that the solicitor is the one that has to authorize and go, and go through this. He's going to take each ordinance, check, go through the wording of it, make sure it still meets with what the state statutes tell it's have to be, make sure they're not using archaic and old wording in this, bring it up to date. Something to be eliminated.
When we, when we, when my internet did this new code, the town solicitor and I, I was the town clerk at the time, we sat down and we went through every single ordinance, and there were some there that are ancient, some of them that are old, but the feeling at that point in time was that they shouldn't be changed. I think some of them should be changed, but since that time, I'm going back maybe ten to twelve years, as the council adopted chain lists to the ordinances, I would collect about six or seven of them, and send them to a company in Florida who put them in the correct shape and proper order and so forth, they did not edit the content, but that had already been reviewed by a town solicitor, so it didn't require reviewing again, and they would send us back as many as we wanted to order changes to our code, and every member of the council got a new code, a new insert, we took out the incorrect ones and we put in the new ones, and that's ideally the easiest way to do it.
We still do that process, and that process has been done, that's your supplement five, six, and seven, since, since I've been as clerk, you had done it up to there. This is really different, this is a revision, he's going to take each ordinance and make sure that it's keeping up to the state, I mean, the state.
We don't want to keep up with the state, almost in my opinion. We don't have to.
Nancy is saying that where the, some of our ordinances are inconsistent, one with the other, and it's really to try to get a level playing field, so that applicants, councils, people who deal with us are dealing with a sensible code of ordinances.
I agree that we should have a sensible code, but as, as, as Mr. Ticey said on a number of occasions, whenever we make changes to our code, that code is then adopted by the General Assembly, and that, that law then supersedes the state laws.
No, that's the charter.
That's the charter.
No, no, I mean, this is a code, no.
Oh, the charter, yeah, that's the charter.
The problem, the problem is, and I've said it since I've sat in this chair, is we have ordinances that are really, we don't enforce, around the books, we really need to take a hard look at some of these things we don't do, because it gives someone the ability to go to the police department or somewhere, register a complaint, saying that that's a violation of an ordinance that's in town, that really is something that we have no intentions of, because it was a hundred years ago. That really is something that we have no intentions of because it was 100 years ago, somebody put that there and it doesn't really even apply today, but it's still there.
Yeah, for one example, there is one in there that's very old that says, "One shall not shoot their blunderbust on Sundays." Well, this is 2009 and I don't know what a blunderbust is.
A blunderbust. There must be some form of...
I still have mine.
But I'm just, you know, I mean, there are examples, I think there's some that are probably even a lot more relevant than that, of ordinances that are there.
I'm not against updating the code.
I'm going to make a motion that the request of the town clerk be approved.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the request of the town clerk. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed?
Abstained.
No abstentions.
I haven't explained what I really mean, so I'll handle it next time I can do it.
Bids and requests for proposals, town administrator, you can have your request approval to solicit bids for the mower brush cutter lease purchase. I'm going to have a question on this one. If we're buying it, why are we leasing it?
Request approval to go out to bid for a brush cutter as was approved at the financial town meeting.
The matter says here that it's a lease purchase and I saw that someone had found a piece of equipment, had a price tag for it, and we were buying that piece of equipment. And that's what we voted the money for because that was the piece of equipment we were buying.
That's what I recall because they said they'd found one that they could purchase.
So now it has to go out to bids. I'm just doing what I think we've been advised by the solicitor.
Why is it called, why is it called lease purchase? This should be a bid sheet specification for the purchase. I mean, we approved the sum of money which is supposed to buy this piece of equipment and there should be no additional charge, you know, for the equipment. That's a purchase. I didn't think we were doing it as an optional lease or a purchase, we were doing it as a purchase.
And also, can I just supplement that? The correspondence on May 14th says, "The total cost of the lease purchase is $32,000."
That's true.
Now, all along, we have been advised that it was a purchase for 22,000. From the earliest time we discussed this, which was in February.
Okay. And I think the confusion is the 22, when the equipment was found at a reasonable price, now we had to figure a way of getting the funds for it. And obviously, there's nothing in my budget this year to go out and get a piece of capital equipment and we were told that a piece of a capital equipment would, the purchase would have to be voted at the financial town meeting. I mean, this is what I was told. The whole plan along was to use the funding left available in this budget for the second cut. Okay, so there's roughly $10,000 available right now that has to be used to do the spring cut before June 30th. So it was going to be a lease in that term, but then it was, we had to go to financial town meeting to get the other roughly $22,000. So that's what the, that's how, it was explained to approach the funding issue and...
The point is, the first thing came to the council was we were going to purchase a piece of equipment for $22,000, went to the budget committee, told the budget committee that we could purchase a piece of equipment, there was a piece of equipment available and this was what the cost was. So it was approved, placed into the docket by the budget committee to reduce the amount of money we were spending for the brush cutting, to buy the brush cutter so that we would have that ability. This is not what's being presented us to tonight, that it's 22,000 plus 10,000, you know, for a total of 32,000 to buy this piece of equipment. That's not what the bill of goods we were sold prior to going to a financial town meeting to ask for this. Is the, is the, a piece of equipment you were looking at prior to the financial town meeting still available?
Yes, it is.
And what's the purchase price of that piece of equipment?
It's $32,000.
That's not what we were told going into this.
Now, can I ask you a question?
Something left me.
Yes, it was 22.
It was 22,000?
It was 22 out of next fiscal year's money. That's where, and 10, I wandered off, it's 10080, was coming, instead of least, instead of paying a contractor this spring to cut the grass, that amount of money was going to be used to lease the equipment to cut the grass. So it was going to be spent anyhow, whether we paid a contractor to do it.
With all due respect, the council was never told.
No, and neither was the budget committee. I have the minutes of the meeting that you attended and explained to the budget committee what it was and lease never was mentioned that night, it was a purchase.
Yeah, it was to get a cap, $22,000 of capital purchase money for next fiscal year. To continue the purchase, yes.
I don't read any...
No, I'm all...
In this memorandum that you sent May 14th, the new mower will be used for the spring '09 cut and thereafter.
Yes.
I hope that piece of equipment that you designated is not in our, it's not here at the present...
No, 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 no. I was hoping it would be so we could start a spring cut already, but then we were told it had to go out to bids, like you see, and not a lease, so I didn't...
Going back to February 18th.
February 18th, yes.
Okay, benefit cost analysis for FY 910, capital purchase request, used mower brush cutter, $22,080.
Right. That's for, that's for next fiscal year. That was an analysis of the $22,000 that would be spent for, that was for next fiscal year. I was speaking to the budget committee about next fiscal year. So that was put into a...
Well, my point was, when you came before us, it was the same thing. I was under the impression that you had found a used brush cutting mower for $22,080.
Okay.
Okay, that's the problem. At no point during those conversations leading up to getting this thing approved at the financial town meeting for the $22,080 was a mention that the machine was $32,000 and we'd taken $9,000 that was left in this year's budget to do this. It wasn't a $32,000 machine, it was a $22,000 machine. This is what the confusion is.
Right, right.
It's not, it's more than just confusion, it's misleading. And quite frankly, when people mislead the council, it's wrong. And I, it's the kind of thing that I really take and I think the rest of us did take offense at. And that is just not right.
Well, that's, even in the analysis, purchase and yearly cost of used brush mower cutter, purchase price, $22,080. And then we go into what, you know, the operating costs are. But it's clearly even indicated in this document that the purchase price is 2280, not 32.
No, I can, I can see how you're confused. My intention was that money was...
I'm not confused.
No, was coming, was, well, I probably, I was confused on how to separate the funds that were available and hopefully available for the next fiscal year.
It's easy.
That's where...
We have to say, look, it's $32,000, I intend to use 9,000 from my current budget and to budget 22 for next year. If that isn't clear, I don't know what is.
Jim, it wasn't explained to the budget committee in that way during the testimony.
No, I agree with that, but I think that, as Steve mentioned, the focus was on the $22,000 because that's what was in the FY 0910 budget. So he was trying to explain the $22,000 capital purchase.
Okay. Okay, but here's how he explained it, that we hire a brush mower contract and use, with use of 305 hours, $65, $65 an hour was $19,800. By spending $22,080, we were going to have a savings because, you know, the 19, and they were using 19, 8 to 22, they weren't using 19, 8 to 32 because it may have changed someone's mind in how they were voting on that and whether or not this was an acquisition we were going to do at that time for that number. This is the way it was presented. No one said, in any of this, no one said, "I'm using 10,000 from this year in what, and plus what I'm asking you for." But that's, that's why I think we have a problem. We thought we were buying a $22,000 mower, not a $32,000 mower. That's the problem.
The 22,000 versus the 19,000 was all FY 0910. Had we not purchased the mower for 22,000, we would have had to spend 19, 8 to cut the sides of the road.
Yes, I understand that. I fully understand that, but we're not, it's not doing 19 to 22. That made it sound like this was a no-brainer. There was a no-brainer. We spend 19, 8, we're going to spend 22 and then we're going to have a total yearly operation cost, you know, after the fiscal year of $7,600, so we're cutting 19 to 76. We're not cutting 19 to 76, we're spending 32 and then spending $7,000 a year on top of that.
Mr. President, there is also the picking of the matter is I'm not sure that we can just blithely take $10,000 from the current year operating budget and then say, voila, we're going to use this as lease to buy. It's always muddy between expenses and capital, but I think that's going a little too far.
And, Mr. President, if I may, also, if I remember, in the discussions early on, there was talk of buying it at that time for 22,000. There was no talk about buying it for 32. If you, if you were going to buy it right then and there, because you said you hoped that you would get it right away, the only figure that ever came up was 22,000.
That I needed 22,000 more.
More, see, more, more never came up in the conversation and that's the problem. If somebody said more, then we understand there's a number and you're adding to it, but somebody said, "This is what I need."
Because if I recall, in that discussion, you were saying that if you, you could have bought it right then to use it for spring for 22,000. It wasn't that I need 10 now and 22,000 later.
Mr. President, I think we're at a dead end because the piece of equipment is a $32,000 piece of equipment the town financial meeting has authorized, some 22,000, so I don't think we can authorize going out for a bid for a piece of equipment that's 10,000, roughly 10,000 more than the financial town meeting authorized. Unless we can come up with an additional 10,000, which, given our overall financial condition, I'm really confident we can't do. It's then throws us into a problem next year of how are we going to pay for the mower. But as far as going out for bid, I don't see any way we can go forward.
Are we saying that there's no way we can purchase this machine for $22,000 as of July 1st when the new budget comes online?
Well, that was the whole intention and to lease it with the money we have with this fiscal, that was the issue with having it available for the spring cut, which is right now. And I have $10,000 available for that spring cut to hire a contractor.
I don't know if there's anything wrong with you spending $10,000 for the spring because you're not going to get the machine purchased until July 1st.
Right.
And then spending $22,000 for the machine.
That's in essence where it comes down to, it's just spread across the...
The lease amount would go toward the purchase.
The lease, yeah.
No, no.
Because if the lease amount, yeah, then it would be a $12,000 machine.
Right.
If you tell them you're going to hire a contractor for 10,000 to do the...
You're going to spend 9,000, you just said it's $32,000, 9,000 now and 22. The problem is, the council was operating on a $22,000 figure, not 32.
I understand what you're saying, I certainly do.
And there's, well, in the abstract, there's a solution, but I don't think it's a real solution. The abstract solution, of course, is simple, just have the person that wants to sell the equipment drop the price down to 22,000, which the seller would, I'm making a wild guess, probably wouldn't like that idea.
The machine is not 22,000, it's 32,000. Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
In essence, yes. But the way to pay for it is what I was trying to address.
Well, I understand that, but you know, when you're looking at a document that, number one, you know, when you're doing an analysis and you say, purchase and yearly cost, and one is purchase price is $22,000, not 32 minus 9,000 I have.
4910.
Under the understanding that that was the full price of the equipment was.
Mr. President, to get to the heart of the matter, I'd make a motion that we disapprove the request to go to bid.
I would consider you make a motion to simply table this matter, we may be able to find a solution somewhere. I don't see how, but tabling it is just as good as killing it.
They can always bring it back if the seller wants to reduce the price.
Yeah, you can always...
If it's tabled, they can bring it back at any time.
Yeah. With appropriate notice.
Yes.
I'll concede that Mr. Costas...
Motion to table.
To table.
I'll second, I'll second, Mr. Costas.
We have a motion and a second to table this matter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Town administrator and police chief Blakey request approval to solicit bids for animal shelter pound services.
Our animal shelter contract will be running out the end of this fiscal year and we'd like to advertise to get bids in for the next three years. It's a three-year contract generally.
I'll make a motion that the, if we, the county can authorize to solicit bids for the animal shelter.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this solicitation of bids for the animal shelter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you. Town administrator announcements, comments, and questions?
As part of the collaborative, we went out for a few oil bids for the coming fiscal year and the responses came in and both the school department and the town chose Petro Oil. Petro Oil sent us a document that was totally unacceptable. So I didn't want to sign the document, I sent it to the town solicitor who also commented on it and returned it to Petro and told him that we would not be signing that document. Petro sent it to their corporate legal department and the bottom line is that we have no agreement per se, we have signed no agreement, but it's, they have indicated that they will sell us oil all of next year for $2.19 per gallon, that they will lock it in at $2.19 per gallon. That is against the 275 per gallon that we estimated in the FY 0910 budget. All the liquid tax notices went out and as of earlier this month, I don't seem to have the figures with me here, but we are getting responses from them. If I recall correctly, in the last two weeks, we got $146,000 in taxes collected, so it's coming along. Abatements, the abatements so far this year without the abatements that you've approved tonight is $44,277 or 0.14 percent, recalling that this is the third year in the three-year cycle of revaluation. It appears as though we're going to be going to arbitration for one police grievance and two fire department grievances. That should be coming up soon, you'll hear more on that as we go along. That should be coming up soon, you'll hear more on that as we go along. The interested individual that we had in purchasing property at the industrial park has indicated that it's no longer viable for him, so we are back to square one. Rhode Island Department of Transportation is evaluating signage for both Stafford Road and Crandall Road to be used as a bike route. Last week, the question was asked, what about the $300,000 resolution that was defeated at the financial town meeting? Well, that was $300,000 for abatements. And I believe the answer to that would be that we're just going to have to watch the abatements, and as these abatements materialize, we're going to have to look for the tax value to cut from the budget as we go along. So as these abatements are authorized, we're gonna be looking for places to get that money back. The police department has received a $39,000, or will be receiving a $39,000 grant for computer maintenance and upgrade. $15,000 of it will be stimulus money, and the remaining 24 will be through the burn grant. That's all I have.
Thank you. And council...
Now, before we leave, Jim, at our last meeting, you had a, that Monday, you had a scheduled date with Joe Dias. Has that date, and it was canceled, and you were reporting out Google mine?
I have been unable to reach Joe Dias and get another, get another date set.
Okay, so at the next meeting, we'll hopefully have...
An update. Council announcements, Mr. Ruda?
Yes, Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to take a minute just to honor a very prestigious person sitting to my left who was recently honored with an honorary doctorate degree in law from Roger Williams University. And this person is Louise Durfee, who is a trailblazing lawyer and an early champion of legal protections for the environment in Rhode Island. She is a past president of Save the Bay, and she chaired the task force that in 1980 recommended the creation of the Narragansett Bay Commission. She was later appointed as the first general counsel of that commission. Attorney Durfee also has been active in the Autobahn Society of Rhode Island since 1970, when she joined its Board of Directors, and she still serves on its Council of Advisors. From 1991 to 1994, Ms. Durfee was the director of the Department of Environmental Management, overseeing programs to protect the air, water, and wetlands of Rhode Island. Attorney Durfee has also made a major mark in the private practice of law, serving as a partner to the prominent Providence law firm of Tillinghast, Collins &amp; Graham, from 1966 to 1991, and as a partner in the Providence office of Brown-Rudnick L.L.P. from 1995 to 2005. She was the first woman ever appointed to the Rhode Island Board of Bar Examiners, and she has served on the State Advisory Commission Committee on Judicial Appointments and the Committee on the Treatment of Women in the Courts. On Friday, Louise Durfee was honored by her peers at Roger Williams University with an honorary doctorate degree. And Louise, I have to congratulate you on a lifetime achievement. Now she will kill me. You will witness.
We finally got somebody educated on the council.
Nancy, I think you should have your...
I'll keep with you. Well, thank you very much, Joanna, thank you, Congresswoman, for taking the time to do that. I was embarrassed on Friday, and I'm embarrassed now, so...
I know, that's why we did it.
Thank you.
Does that mean we now have to listen to you, Ms. Durfee?
No, it's Dr. Durfee.
Dr. Durfee.
That has not changed a thing, I have a little, so...
You've been a doctor a long time, you have a jurisprudence as a doctor, right?
Yeah, okay.
Are there any other council announcements?
I just had a request. I wanted to ask the town treasurer whether we had received a draft of the official statement for the upcoming bond issue.
No, I have an appointment in June 11th. At that time, I will present, they will be presenting it to me. I've attended two meetings, and the last meeting will be June 11th.
Well, I just, sometimes they forward those documents to you and to the administrator, but when the first draft of the official statement comes through, I think that should be circulated to the council, and I'm hereby requesting that, just for information's sake, and any drafting changes with a time limit of review, so...
It will be...
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other council announcements, not town solicitor?
There's nothing from the town solicitor this evening.
Then it's time to entertain a motion for our executive session.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to 4246, 582, litigation.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion seeing none, all those in favor? We're now in executive session.